It's 6 o'clock. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting for Perry City Council Tuesday, January 15, 2019. Order please. We have a call. Item 3 is the invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you're able, please rise. For the invocation, I'd like to call on Councilman Reverend Willie King with Faith to Bible Fellowship.
This is my his praise. Father God, we thank you so much for how you have blessed us in this city. I pray now, Father, that we die another new year that you will give us wisdom and knowledge that we be able to conduct the business of the city, Lord. And you must help our community, Lord, to move forward. And we do thank you for our staff here at the city, Lord. And we ask you to bless us now that we go forward. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hunt to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 4 is the selection of the 2019 Mayor Pro tempore. Each year, this council lets one of their own to serve in the Mayor Pro tempore position. This particular position is very critical for the operation of the city. Our charter states that we cannot have an official meeting without either the mayor or the Mayor Pro tempore presiding. That has become an issue at times. There are times when I have conflicts and am not able to attend various meetings and the Mayor Pro tempore stands in for not only regular scheduled meetings for the City Council committee meetings, but also some very important meetings that we have in the community at large. So, having said that, at this time, I will ask council for nominations for the selection of the 2019 Mayor Pro tempore.
I nominate Randall Walker.
That's second motion.
If there's a nomination?
It's missing here.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Mr. Randall Walker be selected as the 2019 Mayor Pro tempore. So move.
That's second.
Now there's a second. Since there's no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Any abstentions? Please let the record be read. Mr. Walker abstains. The motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for agreeing to serve for this next year. And if you would, please rise. In recognition of your service as Mayor Pro tempore for 2018, I personally want to thank you for the job that you have done. You have filled in admirably. You have filled in every single time that you were called upon and some when you weren't. And I appreciate that as well. You do a fantastic job. You stay on top of what's going on in the city all the time. And your leadership is exemplary. And I really appreciate how you lead this city in my absence. So in recognition of that, I'd like to present you with this plaque that says, "Presented to Randall Walker for outstanding leadership, Mayor Pro tempore, January 2019," for last year's service. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Item 5 are community partner updates. Do we have any community partners with us who wish to address council at this time?
Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you for allowing us to do this when we get to join you. Our annual meeting for the Perry Chamber of Commerce.
Your name and who you represent.
We're only within the President Chamber of Commerce here in Perry. Our annual meeting is next Wednesday, the 23rd, from 11:30 a.m. until 1 p.m. at the Arts Center. We certainly hope that you and any in the audience can join us. Also, following that, on that Thursday, will be our business after hours, our January business after hours on Thursday, the 24th, 5:30 to 7:00, in our location in downtown. We hope that you can join us.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. You all do a wonderful job. Any other community partners wish to address council? Thank you. Item 6 are citizens with input. Any citizen present who wishes to address council on any topic?
Do you want to go first?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
I'm glad to be here. My name is Dara Ann Woodfall. I live at 926 Gene Street. And I wanted to let you know, Mayor, Mr. Randall Walker did a fabulous job by UIC. Because I kept asking about you. But I had thought, back in the days, the latest, he'd all get the same thing what the men get for doing the work, because they do the same thing the men do. So I had thought, the only thing I got married to beat you up on, you were making more money for. So I came right to him that you were IELC. I went back in 2018, about the festival. It was awesome. I really enjoyed. People was coming in at the welcome center, center to our city. And MC, she was off the chains. Carl London did a fabulous job. There's a lot of work into that, but he did a fabulous job. And I was talking to some of the, one of the city council, and I said, I was gonna look at y'all, looking at truth at times through the year. We have some, we hope to come one day that we can get Kennedy here and John Newton and Tina Turner, but gonna take money to be out here, look in the future. Because we really enjoyed the festival this time over at the Ag Center. And my sister, she came up. And so more people are gonna come over on the carpet wherever they can make it. And so when we got there, we lived coming in around about 8:00, the city temptation. They was awesome. I really enjoyed them. And my sister from St. D. and my other cousin from here in Perry, they all, they was bad. They drove up there in their van. They said, "Mr. D., where are y'all?" I said, "The left foot and the right foot." So we had a good time. I enjoyed dancing. And I was looking for Mr. Gallow, but I heard he went to a concert, so me and Mr. Randall Walker, we danced. I tried to get Mr. Randall Walker to do the leg slaps. Oh, no, I can't do that. But we really enjoyed. And I'm sorry that I missed the buzzer drop. You know what? I fell asleep. Because I was, I had did a lot of decaying cookie boots stuff. I fell asleep. When I woke up, it's 9:00 o'clock or something. I said, "You couldn't have been here on?" And I really thank for all the police and the big piece, Perry, Georgia, all over the United States, for doing their duty in 2018. And I also thank the state trooper, because it's not easy out there, y'all. I know it's not easy out there. The state trooper were doing their duty in 2018, especially Carl 295. I'll leave y'all with that 295. But I really enjoyed. And I'm looking at the future to have another good festival. But I'm gonna ask you this. A lot of people didn't come, our rent cost, they didn't have transportation like it was down in the bottom. And I would ask you, Mayor, could you look into, could they get a train to be up there by that old post office to pick people up and take them out there on that side? And Gene Sandler and Wilma Hubert did real good selling their T-shirt, because I bought one, my sister bought one. And I really enjoyed. And I was, you know, when you're on stage, you gotta give the other people's time to set up their stuff for the other team to come in. And one of our, African American, she acted so nice. I said, "What is she doing up there, talking to that MC like that?" She had to wait till the other people get off the stage for to set up their stuff, for them to do their thing, the temptation. But I really enjoyed. I really enjoyed. And our daughter is good. And like I say, we've been having a lot of killing going on, but we ain't got around here so broken in Macon and Rome and Ronald Robin. But I ask everybody in the United States of America, it's not the people, it's not the world, it's the people. If you're doing right with everyone, good things will come to you. But you don't correct it, bad things will come to you. I noticed in my church anniversary, it was the 2nd Sunday of December. And my church was 153 years old. I wrote a check for $153, and then I wrote a check for going to Post Saint. And I was standing out at Saturday night, and something came up. I said, "Thank you, Lord. I got my blessings, but I got it by double than what I read out." And my church was established in 1822, I believe. Our church came through by the Balm, African, Cajun people. And I wasn't even born there, but we still out there in the Balm. And I love my church, and a lot of our members don't change, but I'm not going on that. Me and the pastor can't get along. But like I say, in the church, you got to divide by the pastor group. You cannot tell the pastor what to do. We had a lot of confusion out there. But Balm, I went to school out there, played, and I ain't going. I told the pastor, I said, "If I don't get along with you, I'll leave until you go, and then I'll come back." Send me Woodfall, you. I said, "Yeah, I'm sure he is."
Thank you.
Hey, glad to have you back, Mayor.
Thank you.
My brother, he couldn't do the leg slide, but brother, he said, "Oh, I can't do that." But many have danced awhile.
Thank you, Ms. Woodfall. Anyone else like to address council?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Please state your name and address.
My name's Fred Anderson. I live at 102 Offspring Court here in Perry, Cheshire subdivision. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council members for the opportunity to speak to you today. My wife and I have lived in Cheshire for 22 years. In fact, we raised our daughter here. And we call Perry home, and we chose to retire here. Denise is a retired educator. I retired from Robbins Air Force Base a couple of years ago. So the planned development over at 1820 Macon Road adjacent to Cheshire is a big concern to myself and my neighbors here, so that's why we're here. I sent an email to each of you that I know that you received, and I won't get in the weeds tonight to go over those issues, but those are some of the things that came up in the meeting with the developer, which a lot of us frankly were blindsided. All of a sudden, we got this letter, and we said, "What?" So we go there, and all candor was like, "It's a done deal, and you know, what's your input to this?" And we're just sitting there in shock. So again, thank you for the opportunity to at least tell you that we're concerned about this. I realize there's a process going forward with this. That's how it has to be. But I ask that, you know, as you go forward with this, that you take measure of what our position is and what's in the good interest of the neighborhood and make a decision based on that. We obviously feel it's not good for our neighborhood for various reasons that I gave in my email. But again, as the process unfolds and moves forward, I hope that you take part in consideration. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I. Let me go ahead first. Because you're probably gonna cover where I was gonna cover.
I don't know. My name is Tara McAbell, and my husband, our family. And I live at 119 Windermere Circle. So we also live in Cheshire. And thank you for allowing us to speak. We're kind of trying to get ahead of where we're at in this process. My husband Mark and I actually moved back to Perry. We're both born and raised here, but we moved away after college, moved to the metro Atlanta area. We moved back because our oldest was starting kindergarten. And we knew what a great place it would be to have, to come back and be able to raise our kids here. So despite the fact that we still work, both of our addresses for, both of our companies are still in Atlanta, we made this home. And we set out to make Cheshire home. That was a very conscious decision, despite having land in a neighboring county. As long as I can remember, Cheshire's always been very desirable, and it's always had great neighbors, and it's always had a very good reputation. The neighborhood has always been sought after for location and property sustainability. In fact, the homes in this neighborhood are usually sold before the home goes on the market or shortly thereafter. The project, driven by ADP Housing in Alasta and backed by Rhett Homes and Steve Brooks, who are both former employees of the Amblering Group, which are the owners of Ashton Landing here in Perry. They held a meeting with the Cheshire residents, and it was very apparent that they do not know who Perry is or what Perry is like. Perry's motto, "Where Georgia Comes Together," will inevitably be tainted in the minds of many homeowners in Cheshire, as our home values will be impacted. Our small area will become even more dense, and the safety and security of our neighborhoods will be forever changed. We, the homeowners in this neighborhood, are the ones who will support and continue to support the new and evolving Perry. We look forward to progress and development. However, this is not the change that Perry needs, and this is not the change that Cheshire needs. Our investments deserve to be protected. We deserve to be represented by those that we trust to protect our largest asset, which is generally our home. When I was a teenager, I remember there was an urban legend in Perry. And according to the legend, you could move away from Perry, but you would always come back. And as I've watched over the years, there's some truth to this. But one thing I know as an adult versus being a teenager is that that's by choice. People choose to come back because they choose to raise their kids here. I really feel like if Perry continues to allow this type of development in neighborhoods where it impacts housing values, that the families who are currently moving into this town will choose to go elsewhere. And I just hope that, you know, as this process carries on, that we continue to very much remember, this company is a company out of Alasta. This is not a company that started in Perry that's choosing to develop. They will leave, and we will be left with the development that they're gonna profit from. Each and every one of us in our neighborhood will be impacted financially from it. So we'll continue to bring our arguments forward for the next meeting, but I just wanted to kind of let you know that we are, we're all here kind of binding together to make sure that you guys know that we're depending on a very open and honest discussion and look forward to your support.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Well, since I took care of most of these people since they'd been teenagers, I will go ahead and introduce myself. I'm in at Gentry. I live at 205 Inverness Drive, also in Cheshire place. My main concern is something that's already happened, and that's a subdivision that I believe is gonna be called Legacy 2. I live on a very short street. The man this building is is bringing heavy-duty equipment, trucks, any kind of vehicle they possibly can down that road every day. We cannot even get out and go to the mailbox or take the garbage can out in fear of one of those pieces of equipment coming down and throwing a rock, going too fast. And this man that's developing this, he also developed Legacy 1, which is off of Perry Parkway. I want council to consider having this construction company to come through their other subdivision, Legacy 1. Let folks over there know how it feels. I don't want anybody else to have to bear the burden that we're burdened with, but they are just backing up Highway 41. Now, go Legacy Park, they can go Parkway, they can go through that subdivision instead of coming through Cheshire. And we would appreciate anything this council can do to help us. Thank you for your time, and we'd appreciate your efforts, Ms. Matt.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I'll see. Phil Jarner, I'm here representing Jack James, 210 Winery Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just wanted to second what's been said by other citizens here that were opposed to the proposed development going outside on Macon Road. I know more information will come, but I know Jack didn't want to relay his opposition today to this. He couldn't be here today.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to go. My wife Tara has already spoken, but she lets me speak sometimes. I have the same concerns that my neighbors do. We've made our home in Cheshire, we've lived a lot of money in Cheshire. It's a great place, and I saw after neighborhood and were comfortable there. We would like to continue living there. And this development, I think all of us in here know, it will impact us. It will impact our families, it will impact our safety. It is not what we need in that area town. There's a lot of land around here to do this at. So we're not opposed of this type of development. We're just opposed of this type of development on backyard. And I just ask you, please, consider all the concerns of the citizens there, and I hope that you'll vote to protect our values in Perry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Item 7 is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section 36-67A-3C. 7A, council, this is an amendment to the Land Development Management Ordinance. The applicant, the city of Perry, is requesting a text amendment establishing a minimum house size. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is a text amendment, as you mentioned, to the Land Management Ordinance establishing a minimum house size for single-family residential properties in the city of Perry. This came up as a result of discussion regarding tiny houses. Tiny houses are defined under the International Building Code as structures 400 square feet or less. So this, we're going a little bit beyond that, I think, being more proactive in addressing the community and the character of the community. We have proposed an amendment that would establish two different house, minimum house sizes for different areas of the community. After looking at the square footages in a number of neighborhoods, particularly in the core area of town, and determining what those house sizes currently are, we've recommended that 1,200 square feet be the minimum square footage for a new single-family house in the Residential Agricultural District and in the R2 and R2A zoning districts. 900 square feet, we're recommending as the minimum square footage for new single-family residential in the R2 and R3 districts, as well as the Form-based code districts. We are not recommending a minimum house size in the Residential Manufactured Home District, which would allow for the true tiny houses, if anyone were interested there. We have also included in this recommendation that someone would be allowed, or could potentially be allowed, to build something smaller by special exception, which would go through the planning commission and ultimately to City Council for a smaller house size. And we've also recommended in the non-conforming section of the ordinance that any house currently existing that is less than that minimum house size would be allowed to rebuild if there were, if it were destroyed for whatever reason. The planning commission reviewed this at its meeting in December and recommended approval of the proposal as I've just stated. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is any member of council, I have any questions with Mr. Wood regarding this item?
Mr. Wood, I have a question. Maybe I misheard what you said, but the 1,200 square feet minimum is also applicable in R1 as well as R2A, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I heard it was R2 and R2A, so I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry. It's R1 and R2A and the Residential Agricultural.
Okay, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, sir. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this amendment to the Land Development Management Ordinance, requesting a text amendment establishing minimum house Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this amendment to the Land Development Management Ordinance as described?
Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of confused as far as the debt trailers, that kind of law, as for putting trailers in the, in the council meeting.
As long as, as long as it's within the appropriate zoning, then trailers are still allowed. Are you talking about mobile homes that you live in?
Right.
Yes, is that correct, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Those are allowed in the residential manufactured home, Mr. Wood.
Anyone else wish to speak against? Thank you. This hearing is now closed. Item 8 is a review of minutes. Item 8A, council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the December 18th, 2018, pre-council meeting and the December 18th, 2000 council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any additions, deletions, changes, or discussion regarding these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Any abstentions? Ms. Padam Grace? Please let the record indicate Ms. Padam Grace abstains from voting due to her absence. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 9 is old business. Item 9A are ordinances for the second reading and adoption. Item 9A1 is the second reading of an ordinance amending the alcohol beverage license distances in downtown, in the downtown district. Mr. Smith?
Mayor? Mayor and council, we have it for you for consideration, second reading of the ordinance that will decrease the distance required, this is door-to-door distance now required from establishments looking to sell alcohol and religious establishments from 300 feet to 100 feet. And the obviously goal here is to increase the desirability of locations downtown for restaurants moving forward. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions from council? Hearing none. This is the second reading, and it is time for action. At this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance that amends the alcohol beverage license distances in downtown, in the downtown district as described.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9A2 is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. Mr. Smith?
Mayor? Mayor and council, this is the standard mid-year budget amendment, and what this does is accounts for actual expenditures and revenues up to this point in time. Obviously, the big thing here, and something we've been talking about a lot lately, is healthcare costs for insurance for employees. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have other than that.
Any questions from council? This is a standard item. We do this periodically in order to make adjustments to the budget as we go through the year. So this is nothing that we do. Questions, council? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. We adopt the ordinance that amends the fiscal year 2019 operating budget as described.
So move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10 is any other old business. 10A is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item 10B is any other old business from council members. Ms. Padam Grace?
I have none.
Mr. Jones?
Has none.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No.
Thank you. Item 10C is any other old business from the city manager who is absent, and I'm gonna assume he has none. Item 10D is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10E is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 11 is new business. 11A are matters that have been referred from the January 14th, 2019 work session that we held last night, and the January 15th, 2019 pre-council meeting that we had at 5:00. Mr. Smith, is there anything in either one of those sessions that need our attention at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, anything to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council, this is the first reading, therefore no action is required by you at this time. Item 11C is the award of bids. 11C one is bid number 2019-15 for a utility vehicle for the economic development department. Ms. Worthing?
Good evening, Mayor and council. In your packet, you'll find a bids and middle summary sheet for bid solicitation number 2019-15 for a utility vehicle for our economic development department. As part of the solicitation, staff directly contacted 14 vendors requesting bids be submitted, and we also posted solicitation on the city of Perry's website and the Georgia Preparatory Registry website. As you can see, we had four responsive bidders ranging from just south of $19,500 to just north of $20,000, or $25,600. The department, fleet manager, and purchasing agent recommendation is that we go with Perry Four, whose total amount of bid was $19,496.34, who will be delivering a 2019 Ford Escape.
They were the low bidder?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any questions, council? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the staff recommendation to award this bid to Perry Four to the amount of $14,496.34 as described.
So move.
This is our second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11C two is the award of a bid for the Sinclair Station stabilization project. Ms. Worthing?
Thank you. The second bid submitter summary sheet that you'll find in your packet is for the Sinclair Station stabilization project. Per council's direction, the city requested design and build proposals for the stabilization of the Sinclair gas station in March of 2018. We received two responses, one from McRight LLC for $118,575 and one from Ogles Construction Incorporated for $131,500. It is staff and purchasing agent recommendation that we go with McRight LLC for $118,575. I would like to point out that even though these bids are from March, McRight was contacted December 13th and they confirmed that they will honor the amount of $118,575. And I also would like to point out that the Perry's Royal Society has pledged approximately $58,000 as part of this project.
Very good. Any questions from council? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we award this bid to McRight LLC in the amount of $118,575 as described.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Please let the record indicate that Councilman Hunt opposes. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 12 is other business in the supplemental agenda. Item 12A is an authorization to execute documents to proceed with financing options for certain capital purchases with the state bank and trust company. This will be Ms. King's item. In our pre-council meeting, she has asked for this item to be tabled for further study and more information forthcoming. So at this time, I will entertain a motion that we table this item as described.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12B are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Item 12B one is a resolution authorizing the city's purchase of real property for public road purposes. Mr. Waters?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing the city's purchase of real property, as you see. This property is described as Lot 17, Block K of the Woodland subdivision of Houston. Phase number two, section number one, Land Lot 215, 10th Landish for Houston County, Georgia. It is located in the city of Perry and necessary for public use and connection with public road purposes and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this resolution? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution authorizing the city's purchase of the real property for public road purposes as described.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12C, we need, we're looking for a motion that will appoint Walker, Hubert, Gray, and Moore, LLP, as the city attorney for the city of Perry, with the contact staff being Ms. Brooke Newby and Mr. Josh Waters.
So move.
There's a motion and a second from Mr. Hunt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Waters, and your firm for stellar representation. Y'all have done it for a long time and we're looking forward to continuing that relationship. And I'm not in jail, so that's. Thank you for the job you did. Item 13 are council memorials. Ms. Biden Grace? Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 14 are department hidden staff items. We'll start with the Department of Finance Administration. Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. I do have some information I think would be interesting for you and for the public regarding the number of permits that were issued by the city and other communities in, in Houston County this past year. We continue to lead the county in the number of single-family residential permits issued. We didn't hit last year's number, but we did get issued 314 permits this last year. Just as comparison, Centerville issued 66 new single-family residential last year for a valuation of about $10.7 million. The city of Warner Robins had 229 new permits with a valuation of about $42.2 million. Houston County had 235 permits for a value, with a valuation of just over $56 million. And again, the 313 from the city of Perry represented a valuation of about $56.9 million. There were a couple of months towards the end of the year that were pretty slow for us. Things seem to be picking back up again with issue 23 as of today for, for this new group. Still moving, going strong in the residential development.
That's good news. Thank you, Mr. Wood. It's nice to be beating the other two cities in the county. I like that. Doesn't always happen that way, but I like it. From the office of the city clerk, Ms. Warren?
Nothing to say, Mr. Sir.
Thank you. From the police department, Chief Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I just have one thing tonight, it's a reminder, on next Monday, January 21st, the annual Martin Luther King Jr. March will be held. For those who don't know, it alternates between Warner Robins and Perry, and Perry's term this year. Assembly will be at 8:00 Monday morning at Old Field Baptist with the march underway at 8:30. We'll proceed through town and end up at New Hope Baptist for breakfast and a program. So I want to put that out as a public announcement and, of course, police will be there providing a safe route. That's all I have.
And all are welcome. All are welcome?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Nothing to mention, sir.
Thank you. From the Economic Development Department, Ms. Harden?
Yes, one item. We are in the middle of our soft launch for the Your Perry app. It's a one-stop shop for residents or employees or people that come to Perry. They can pay utility bills, so if you don't live in a new business and you want to pay your water bill, you can do that. If you see a street pole down or a street light out or a pothole, you can put in service requests on our app. And it's also, has our city calendar and events on it that will do push notifications. So it's just another method that our communications manager, Ellen Palmer, has been working very hard on, on getting this out to the community and to the residents. The official launch will be next week where she'll start her marketing and have it out on Facebook and social media and press releases. But it is available to download today for free on the Android or iOS download app stores, on Google Play or iOS on Apple. And it's, there's also a link on our city website. You can download it that way as well from your phone. So we're excited about that and anybody in the community can download it and use it. So we're excited. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks, ma'am. Mr. Worthing, do you have anything further?
Nothing.
Thank you. Item 15 are general public items. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address council at this time?
Mr. Mayor, Robin Jackson, considering Perry, I just want to echo where Chief Lynn was saying as far as with the march, as all you know, the day is the official birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And of course, we'll be observing on the 21st. So we, you ask all of you and you, all you who are mothers of a different mother, looking like that, be invited to come also. Love to see your face there in the place and come and join with us. And also I'd like to remind you that the Green Derby, I know many of you probably have heard that place, Redness, but that place will be reopening. And we love to see your face in the place there too, as far as the Green Derby will be opening under new management. And last but not least, and I know you've probably heard this for time and time and time, as far as the opening as far as Hilltop area, as far as James Street, only way up and only way down. Any way possible that the city can work out some kind of plan to make another connection as far as in the city. And congratulations for you coming back, as Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you. Item 16 are mayor items. Council, the next time that we will meet will be in February. We meet by our charter on the first and the third Tuesdays of each month with a pre-council and council meeting. We also have work sessions on the first, on the Mondays preceding those at 5:00 in this room. All of our meetings are open to the public. I would encourage your participation. As a reminder, council, you know that the Georgia Municipal Association has two meetings a year. At each one of these meetings, we have an opportunity to get continuing education classes that we're required to take every year. There are several members of this council who have taken every single class offered and some of them multiple times. It, it's very interesting as, and you learn an awful lot, but you also learn as much or more from being able to speak with fellow council members and mayors from across the state. This one is the GMA's Mayor's Day in Atlanta. It'll be the 25th through the 28th. And the second one is in the last weekend in June in Savannah. It's always an interesting time to go. This year, they do this in, in Atlanta so that we will have an opportunity to meet with our state legislatures and have an opportunity to speak with them and their staffs about various subjects that might be coming up in this legislative session. If you have any items of interest that you would like for us to relay to our elected officials, please let myself or one of these council members know and we'll be glad to pass that word along. The only other item I have is to wish everyone a happy New Year. Be safe. It's supposed to be cold tonight, so stay warm. Thank you for your interest and your participation. We stand adjourned.